The January meeting will be held only if needed. I want to jump now to the last matter of board information regarding the revised annual planning board meeting calendar, which apparently we did not officially adopt at the last meeting, and where we had agreed to change the November meeting from the first Tuesday to the second Tuesday. So if I can get a motion to adopt the revised annual planning board meeting calendar for 2021.
So moved.
Kathy, can I have a second?
A second.
Okay, thank you, James. Roll, please.
Hi, James Art. Robert Baron.
Yes, sorry.
Thank you, Robert. I'm gonna jump down to Holly Hasbrook.
Yes.
Richard Hyman.
Yes.
Nat Federici for Vincent Kopicki.
Yes.
Kathy O'Connor.
Yes.
And Rini Toback.
Yes.
Any other planning board members that I don't see?
This is Dwight here.
Oh, hi Dwight, good morning, thank you. Dwight, what's your vote there?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Daniel Finger just joined us.
Oh, and Daniel Finger, did you hear what we're voting on?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, um, do you want to vote on the calendar as sent to the planning board?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
This is Vincent Kopicki.
Oh, hi Vincent, good morning, thank you.
Oh, wow, Daniel, Bill Metz. Okay, next on the agenda is adoption of the minutes of the meeting of November 5th. Does anyone have any additions or corrections or deletions? If not, if there's no additions, corrections, or deletions, can I have a motion to adopt the minutes of November 5th?
Seconded.
Roll the roll, please.
James Art?
Yes.
Robert Baron?
Yes.
Mike Douglas?
Abstaining.
Abstaining. Daniel Finger?
Yes.
Um, I didn't see, Jimena Franchella? Okay, not on yet. Hugh Greech, Hugh Greechen?
And then he just joined us.
Hernani? We're voting on the minutes.
If somebody has noise in the background, maybe they need to mute.
Okay, Hernani for Hugh Greechen? Voting on the minutes? Okay, I'll go on. Holly Hasbrook?
Yes.
Richard Hyman?
Yes.
Vincent Kopicki?
Yes.
Kathy O'Connor?
Yes.
Bernie Tomes? Okay, I didn't see him yet, and Rini Toback?
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, Jimena.
Oh, Jimena, thank you, we're voting on the minutes, what's your vote?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chairman's remarks. If you remember, we had representatives, three of them, from Con Edison at our meeting last week. I'm not sure how much success we're going to get on the trimming of trees on residential streets. We made our point clear, but they, listen, we did ask them if they had accepted our comment on the cutting of trees under the transmission wires adjacent to the Spraybrook Parkway, where our approval said you can cut down the trees in general, but leave the trees right adjacent to the Spraybrook Parkway. And they said they would get back to us. Norma, have they gotten back to us?
So after the meeting, I did hear from Jane, who asked if we had gotten a response from anybody, and I said no. I sent her a copy of the letter that was sent, and she assured me that she would follow up, that we would get a response, but to date, I have not gotten a response.
What a surprise. Okay, that's it for me, Commissioner's remarks.
So this is the last meeting of the year. I do want to thank each and every one of you for your service this year. I want to wish you happy holidays. It's for what they are, it was a rather strange Thanksgiving, you know, last week with having none of my kids home and, you know, not really being able to go anywhere. But it is, it is a pleasure for me and my staff to work with each and every one of you. You each come from such different backgrounds and bring to the table, you know, different ideas and different visions of things, so it's really helpful to us in doing our work to have you onboard and, you know, have you working with us. So again, thank you. I do just want to remind you, though, that you do have an obligation to get your four hours of training in. There are a couple more opportunities this year. If you could try, if you haven't gotten your hours in, if you could try to take advantage of these trainings, we would appreciate that. If you have done trainings and you just haven't gotten your certificates, and please get those in as well, just because we need to have a record of the training hours. Starting last Monday, our staff in the office was reduced down to approximately 25% as best we can do that. There are just some people who need to function in the office. We are obviously trying to, you know, keep the staff and everybody that we work with as safe as possible from the virus, so, you know, that really includes having, minimizing who's working in the building at this point. It does not affect how we work, it does not affect, you know, what we do with you guys. You know, technology is wonderful at this point, for the most part, it's working really well, so, you know, but it's, some staff who just have their phones automatically forwarded to their cellphones or to their homes, others, you know, we get voicemail when we get a phone message, so, you know, if you ever need to reach out to anybody, we will get back to you as soon as we can. And then the last thing was, since we met in November, the budget, the operating budget was submitted to the Board of Legislators. We did go up and defend our budget on November 20th. Our planning department budget, I do have to say what a pleasure it is to have a county executive who truly understands the importance of the planning department, because not only are, you know, is our budget whole, is not only our, even the vacant positions that we still have in our budget still in there for us to fill next year, but they actually put an extra $5 million into our budget for us to be able to run some eviction prevention programs next year, because they, you know, they realize that the impact of COVID is not completely hit yet. It's certainly with evictions and housing issues, it's going to be hitting probably next spring pretty significantly, so, you know, but the extra $5 million in our budget really shows that, you know, the county executive has a lot of confidence in the department and the work that we do, so we absolutely appreciate that. And the board is on track to adopt a budget, you know, in early December, they still have their ads meeting coming up, and then, you know, they should by the middle of the month, actually, I think at this point, have a final budget in place, so we will be watching as they finish the deliberations. That's it for me, Richard.
Okay, thank you, Norma. Next, our referrals, ratification of actions taken by staff in response to planning and zoning actions referred to the County Planning Board, October 16th, 2020, November 15th, 2020. Does anyone have any comments?
Yeah, I have comments about two of the referrals.
Go ahead.
Okay, well, one of them is the Mount Kisco zoning text amendment, station area development bonus, and I was struck by the, there's a substantial benefit, but it applies to 15, not 15%, but 15 units with rent set at about 90% of the Westchester County area median income. And 90%, the rent would be roughly from $2,100 to $3,000 a month, depending on the size of the apartment and family. And the average, no, sorry, the median rent in Mount Kisco for the 12 months preceding April 2020 was $2,250. So what that means is that there is a substantial bonus being provided with not very much benefit in terms of affordable housing, it's at or above the median housing rental cost in that city and/or town. So I'm wondering what the county gets, excuse me, what the city gets out of it, what the people get out of it, aside from a reduction in the quality of life with the reduced setbacks and the additional building coverage, additional height, all of which are negatives in terms of the area for a mere 15 units at or above the median rent. I don't see the logic in that.
Lucas, do you want to discuss the, the letter?
Well, I mean, we were struck by the fact that it, you know, they weren't following the model ordinance provisions. You know, we couldn't understand why they were setting it at 90% as opposed to, you know, 80%. So we sent a strongly worded letter that said that, you know, the village town should adopt the county's model ordinance provisions. That was basically, you know, about it. We haven't really kind of waded into, you know, the quality of life aspects of the increased density, there's just different opinions about that. So, you know, that's where we left the letter, we just made that one comment. But that's, 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 it's good to know about the fact that, you know, within some communities, we are finding that, you know, the affordable housing is essentially, you know, market rate housing, when you look at the existing rents that are charged in a particular area.
Yeah, and that's why I think even 80% is not really affordable housing. This is a, I mean, if you just look at your county salaries, you can see that $100,000 of, at the limit of affordability, that's not exactly a low or moderate income.
Randy, I think you'll see when we go, we go later on the agenda, when we do the affordable housing, that the county is actually supporting with the county funds, that we're talking 60%.
Yeah.
You had a second comment, Randy?
Yes, I was very struck by this proposal to clear the forest, to put up a solar array.
Yeah, I happen to have a friend who lives in Putnam Valley, and this solar array is going to go right next to the Putnam Valley Middle School, and they're going to cut down 581 trees.
Yes, I was astounded.
People in Putnam Valley are up in arms, because they're going to be impacted, and Lucas, did they do any analysis, obviously, solar arrays are good, you know, you don't use fossil fuel, but cutting 581 trees, you lose a lot of carbon absorption, did they do any analysis of that?
Okay, so, so these solar farm applications are coming in fast and furious. You know, we've never seen any of these, you know, as of, if, you know, if you asked me in 2019, we'd never seen any. And now we've had multiple applications coming in this year, so I would expect that these solar farm applications are going to keep coming in at a record pace. We've got, we've been getting almost about like one a month, I would say. So with each one, now that we're kind of learning the ropes with these, with these types of applications, we're finding that it's almost a consistent application type, where they really don't discuss, you know, how many trees get chopped down to build the solar panels. We're finding, you know, as with, with many of these applications, that they're not showing a count of the trees to be removed, and they're not showing visual impact with the application. So with this particular one, you know, I tried to, I tried to start drafting a comment that would kind of touch on that. The issue is that these municipalities have already adopted these zoning regulations that basically permit this. So with this particular letter, I suggested in the, in the letter that I wrote, that the town take a look at its regulations, perhaps, you know, there needs to be a balance, you know, between the benefit of the solar panels and, you know, the wooded character. I mean, with this particular solar farm, I mean, you know, you know, when I look at the site on Google Earth, Google Street View and stuff, it's very, very wooded, and it's also sloped, the slope of the hill goes to the west. So, for example, there's a, you know, the middle school and high school is on the other side of the hill, and it's not clear from the application, the visual impact that this would have on that particular property, as well as a couple of other surrounding residential properties, let alone the view shed from Foothill Street, which is a heavily wooded street. So, you know, I, with this particular referral, we tried drafting a comment to implore the town to, to look at it, to look at this balance, perhaps it might involve re-crafting their ordinance, because now that these, I mean, the ordinances of each municipality have passed are very, very similar to each other. So maybe it's time to take a look and see, you know, maybe, maybe visual impact should play, or tree loss should, should play more into the decision-making, particularly if a special permit is issued, which is usually the requirement for a lot of these solar farms, you know, what would you call like a, usually like a type 3 or class 3 facility, maybe that should be explored.
Lucas, maybe you could send a follow-up letter, since Seeker is involved here, I think this is supposed to be for lead agency, and to tell them that you think the Seeker analysis should include visual as well as, you know, tree removal as a factor. Maybe you could send a follow-up letter.
Sure thing.
And this is particularly true with solar, where it can be put on top of buildings, it can be put on parking lots, where it's extremely beneficial, and the fact that it is customizable to be on location, where you don't lose the power, for every inch that it travels, electricity travels, you lose a portion of it. So for solar, it's just absurd to be doing this, in my opinion.
Okay, Randy, thank you. Lucas, you'll send the follow-up. Are there other comments regarding the referrals?
Yes.
Richard, this is Dwight, I need to recuse myself from the two Peak Skill applications.
Okay, and this is, and I have to accuse myself from the Sleepy Hollow applications to be can say.
Richard, Kathy, it's Kathy, could I ask a question?
Go ahead.
On the 500 trees that they're talking about removing, do they talk about replacing them, which is obviously what we do all over the park scenario, if we take trees down, we always replace equivalent?
No, my understanding was that it's not, not part of the application, like a tree replacement mitigation. I mean, I'm looking at the letter again, you know, we, it wasn't even clear from the site plan how this, how the solar panels would be visually buffered, there was no like buffering analysis. Like usually you would, you would expect to see something with like, okay, we're going to have like a 100-foot buffer or 200-foot buffer, other solar farm applications where they demonstrate a buffer. In this particular application, they did not have any buffer discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments?
Yes, Jimena for Eastchester?
Go ahead.
Yes, the Immaculate Conception Church, I was just wondering, transportation.
The site is part of a larger church campus, and there's like an internal sidewalk system within the church campus that gets, that would get these residents, I think, almost directly to a bus stop.
Okay, I have one, the Lowe's Pad A in Yorktown. The way the sentence in the summary reads is the property has been readied for construction with the applicant having installed a pad for a building and associated retaining walls. So is this mean that they've already started construction before they got site plan approval?
Right, okay, so this, I believe this came in last year, it was supposed to be a Popeyes restaurant, and I guess it didn't get constructed, and so now it's going to be a different, a different type of business, and so they may have received the site plan approval for the Popeyes and built the, the pad, but then maybe now they're changing it.
Okay, any other comments? If not, can I have a motion to approve, ratify the actions with taking into account Dwight is recusing on two Peak Skill, and I am recusing on two Sleepy Hollow?
Daniel, second.
Thank you, Daniel, can I have a second?
Second. Holly, Elba.
Thank you, Holly, roll the roll, please.
James Art?
Yes.
Robert Baron?
Yes.
Dwight Douglas?
Yes.
Daniel Finger?
Yes.
Jimena Franchella?
Yes.
Hugh Greechen, or DPW representative?
To Gail, yeah.
Gail, thank you. Holly Hasbrook?
Yes.
Richard Hyman?
Yes.
Vincent Kopicki?
Yes.
Kathy O'Connor? Bernie Tomes? I don't see Bernie yet, but Rini Toback?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is referral of interest, Greenberg 20-012, Elmwood Preserve draft environmental impact statement. Who is handling that one?
That's me, I'm Michael. Share my screen here.
Okay, can everyone maybe mute while Michael's doing the presentation, please? Thank you.
Okay, can everyone, everyone can see?
Yes.
Okay, this is a referral for a new senior housing development in Greenberg, known as Elmwood Preserve at 850 Dobbs Ferry Road. The site is located on the old Elmwood Country Club. This is a DEIS for subdivision, zoning amendments, and site plan approval, and we will draft the letter and then circulate it to the board for your review after the presentation. The developer is proposing a 175 age-restricted townhomes in 45 buildings along a new road network surrounded by conserved open space. Now, we have previously reviewed a draft scope for this project and sent comment letters on May 7th and June 21st of 2019. Presentation was also given at the April 2019 planning board meeting, and I'm also going to discuss some of the comments from those letters. The site is 106 acres, but is split by property owned by Con Edison, right along here for high tension wires. The golf course ran underneath those wires, but the new development is not proposed to take place on this Con Ed property. Along the south is Dobbs Ferry Road, which is also New York State Route 100B, across from which is a driving range and in development, assisted living facility of 101 units and a greenhouse and nursery. And to the east of the site is the town-owned Rum Brook Park, within which is the Rum Brook itself, and the Rum Brook then connects to the Sawmill River to the north, the Spraybrook Parkway then lies east beyond the park. North and west of the site is a single-family residential neighborhood, and Worthington Road is kind of the main connector street here between Dobbs Ferry and Sawmill River Road. The Sawmill Parkway and I-287 are near the site up to the northwest here, but there's no actual direct access to these highways nearby to the site. Most people will be taking Spraybrook Parkway north and then connecting to I-287 from there. Access to the South County Trailway is provided along Sawmill River Road up here. The site is separated into two parcels, but the two parcels do not actually follow the Con Ed boundary here, so this whole thing is one parcel, and then the parcel boundary for the subdivision we're talking about is right here. The larger parcel, again, is split by the Con Ed line, but the applicant is proposing essentially to combine these two parcels and subdivide this parcel, and then give this parcel to the town of Mount Pleasant to be connected to the rest of Rum Brook Park. The proposed development site-
I think you mean a town, a great town of Greenberg, right?
I'm sorry, Greenberg. The town of Greenberg, yes. The proposed development site would then be 92.6 acres, and then this side property here that would be connected to the park would be 14.2 acres. There is an existing pond along the south side of the site, and a small water course in the northeast corner that flows into Rum Brook, and the existing buildings on site, which remain congregated around here, are proposed to be demolished. The applicant said that they have deteriorated since the golf course closed, mainly because the town was using the buildings as fire and police training centers. There aren't really any major buildings along the rest of the golf course, but of course, there'll be taking out the bunkers and the fairways. There are zoning amendments as part of the DEIS, again, as the site is currently split between the R-30, one-family residential, and the R-20. R-30 allows for, requires 30,000 square foot lot sizes, the R-20 allows, requires 20,000 square feet lot sizes. They did, the applicant did provide a development alternative, showing what is possible under the current zoning, with the current zoning allowing 119 housing units spread over the entire site in a traditional development style. The applicant proposes to rezone the whole site to R-20, and then to further rezone the site into a planned unit development. Planned unit developments in Greenberg are used to allow developers a higher density on the site, while making them cluster the new homes to protect open space. So the proposed site plan is for 42 residential buildings hosting 175 units, each building is, most of the buildings are going to be housing four units apiece. That is a 56-unit increase due to the PUD zoning change. Each unit is to have a two-car garage, which would then total 350 indoor spaces, and then amongst the housing, amongst the buildings are going to be side parking lots, providing 129 surface spaces, again, divided amongst the street network, mainly used for guests. Two vehicular entrances to the site are proposed, giving access to Dobbs Ferry Road, one is the existing entrance to the golf course, and the other would be installed across the entrance to the assisted living facility. This over here along the western side of the property is to be an amenity area, utilizing the existing Elmwood pool and the existing tennis courts, and also the existing 144-space parking lot. A new 3,200-square-foot clubhouse is to be built, replacing the existing buildings. So in grand total, there's 543 parking spaces proposed on the entire site. Around the site would be the required minimum 200 feet of open space to buffer the site from the surrounding properties, some places it gets a little bit wider, and then through this buffer zone, there's proposed to be a new pedestrian pathway to connect the northern cul-de-sacs of Country Club Drive, Overhill Road, and Valley View Road, connecting those neighborhoods to Rum Brook Park itself. Strangely, though, there is actually no connection proposed between the proposed developments and Rum Brook Park itself through this new walkway. Sorry, the site is to be managed through Homeowners Association, following the requirements of PUD zones, but no affordable housing is proposed on the site, as the applicant states that PUD zoning designation does not require it. These are some examples of building facades, they're all the three stories each with three bedrooms, and have two garage spaces, again, facing the streets with two driveway spaces available in front of that. Ownership of the houses on the site will be restricted to people 55 years old and over. If people 19 years and older can live in a residence, if they are married or related to the owner, but again, the owner themselves has to be 55 years or over. Also, everybody 18 and under can only occupy residence for less than 120 days per year. They're essentially trying to have- They're essentially trying to have no children allowed in the development itself or to live there. Regarding transportation, as stated before, there's two vehicular entrances proposed from Dobbs Ferry Road. A new left turn lane is proposed at the second entrance across from the assisted living centers that would provide left turn access into the site. Sidewalks are proposed along only one side of all the interior streets of the site itself. And then they're also proposing to add a sidewalk along the north side of Dobbs Ferry Road between the two new development entrances. But they're not planning to extend that beyond the two entrances. So this also is an ironic twist here, there's no actual sidewalk connection from the site to Runbrook Park at all. Included, and that includes again the walkway that they're proposing. And also there's no bicycle infrastructure proposed. I'm going to talk about that a little bit later. Beeline service to Route 6 is provided along 100B, these stops here. Each of the two new entrances will have a bus stop, an existing bus stop exists at the two new entrances. And Route 6, which follows Dobbs Ferry Road, provides access to the White Plains Metro North Station. And then there are bus routes for Roots 5, 1C, 34 and 38, kind of surrounding the site. But there's no real access to these bus stops due to the lack of sidewalks, pretty much within the whole neighborhood. The total impervious surface coverage on the site would be increased to 22.34 acres due to the new roads and residences. There is an existing manmade pond on the site as well as the small stream that feeds into Runbrook. No construction is to take place near those water features that they are planning on building a small bridge across the stream to allow the walking path in the northern section of the site. New infiltration basins and vegetative swales are proposed within the stormwater pollution prevention plan to provide green infrastructure to handle stormwater. But any excess stormwater would flow into the existing management drains that lead to the Sawmill, the drains that were existing due to the golf course. Regarding other considerations, there was a study done of the historic relevance to the golf course and its buildings. But the State Office of Parks Recreation and Preservation means that the site itself and also the buildings on the site were not eligible for state or national historic registries. There are 447 trees that are to be removed throughout the site. These are mostly trees that are existing within the islands that are surrounded by the course fairways. A new landscaping plan has been developed with the site, showing consistent yard plantings and street trees within the developed areas. And then along the buffer zones, they are to maintain those as either wild meadows or allow some portions to naturalize into woodland. But they are trying to keep the invasive species in check during construction and with the housing association. They regarded that water sewer and public safety systems are to be minimally impacted for the town. And then also they did talk about some basic green building installations, but there was no real discussion about lead or any extensive green building design. It was kind of just basic mechanical things that they're adding to appliances and such. Regarding the draft scope comments that, oh, good one there, sorry. There were five other development plans that were provided, mostly showing zoning compliant developments with and without the PUD overlays or the age restrictions. They stated that the existing plan that they presented provides the highest possible unit counts, but only a median level total population due to those age restrictions. They're going to saying no school age children are allowed to permanently live on the site, so no impacts to the schools. They estimated that vehicular trip generation for the proposed plan is among the lowest of the six they showed, banking on the fact that they're keeping it 55 years and older. The DEIS does estimate that of the six plans, the proposed plan provides the highest annual tax revenue. They were pushing that a lot throughout the whole DEIS. And there was, in a scoping document, they did include a baseball field and other amenities proposed on the land to be dedicated to the town for the Runbrook Park extension. But now the DEIS states that a plan for this area would be worked out between the town and the developer. The developer has offered to donate funds for programming on that site, but the town would be in charge of maintenance of the park. The land would be de-restricted for recreation or past open space. Now for the draft scoping comments, in the comments made in the referral letters regarding, regarding the initial project referral were mainly unheeded, actually. They did say, they did talk about inflow and infiltration, saying that mediation will be discussed with the town. But there were comments that were made about pedestrian access issues due to the bus stops. That was discussed, but the applicant essentially said that they were deemed unneeded based on their studies. They aren't even providing crosswalks across Dobbs Ferry Road to reach these bus stops because they said not enough people cross the street. And also they did talk about bicycle access in general, saying that not many people rode bikes in the area. And they didn't even discuss the fact that we had commented about access to the South County Trailway. We had also mentioned comments that, to look at roadway connections to the neighboring cul-de-sacs. They didn't really look at that, they just talked about the, the walking shows that they're adding. Then we also, of course, made comments about affordable housing, but they were maintaining that they were not going to provide. Now for next steps, the towns.
Michael, Michael, just interrupt for a second. The, the letter we sent with comments on the draft scope.
Yes.
Comments incorporated into the final scope and they were ignored or they were not incorporated into the final scope at all?
They made, they made mention of affordable housing and pedestrians and biking. But they basically just said that it wasn't needed or it wasn't required. Very minimal comments they discussed within the DEIS.
Also, the Greenberg 10% affordable requirement for multifamily buildings is one of the first in the county. Are they saying these are not multifamily buildings and so that's why it's not required?
Essentially, yes. And again, there's, they're using kind of a weird quirk with the PUD development zoning regulations. So they're just saying that it's not required. The town board is to have a public meeting on this DEIS on January 20th. We did talk to the town regarding the Runbrook Park extension. And they said that the Parks and Recreation Board meeting is going to happen on December 2nd tomorrow, so they're going to discuss that there. We will create a draft letter that will be circulated to the board with today's comments that you have. And also then you can add any additional comments you have before we send it out to the town. So with that, if you have any questions or discuss, and I'll take notes on your comments.
Thank you, Michael, any questions from board members?
I'd just like to ask him to repeat, did you say that they're going to be three story structures? Individual units, three story structures with three bedrooms and two parking places for seniors?
I was trying to find that slide there, but yes, potentially they are. We were thinking that was a little big too. But yes, they, three stories, two bedrooms and a lot of parking.
And no kids.
No kids.
And no kids, three bedrooms and two parking spaces. Just making sure.
Any other comments or questions?
This is Daniel Finger, I, I mean, I would like to see, whether it's required or not, I would still like to see some affordable, you know, component here. And I don't see why they can't have any biking, you know. You know, anything for biking somewhere.
And no connection to the park.
Right, that too.
And if I may again, the reason that they probably don't have people crossing that road or parking is because there aren't any people living there now. And when you're proposing a major change in the number of people, there have to be accommodations for people who will be assumedly moving in.
Do we have any idea, Michael, as to why, I mean, we went over this a year and a half ago. Was it just the COVID that delayed it? But even then, it was almost a delay of a year between when they first brought it up in March. We know what the story is, why, why it was delayed?
I didn't receive anything myself about why it was delayed. I would assume COVID, but I haven't, I didn't hear anything, I don't know if Lucas heard anything.
Well, the staff met with, very early on, met with the developer. Planning board made some very strong comments in its letter. And the developer has basically ignored everything we've said. Now, we are only advisory, but I'm curious, you, I know the surrounding neighbors were not happy with this development. Do you have any idea, you know, how this is going across with the planning board or town board, I guess town board zoning changes?
We had sent a message asking, asking Garrett, the town planner. But he essentially didn't want to comment on anything before the, before the public meetings started. For, for the DEIS at least.
Well, I think we should reiterate all the comments that we've made so far and.
Yeah, Richard.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to, you know, I also, I just want to sort of, you know, sort of make sure people understand the magnitude of this. From, for the buildings in this, on this plot on the northern, the northern side, okay? To reach the houses on, you know, the, the existing houses just to the north of them is probably what, like 100 feet, 200 feet? To, to, to read now without any connection to do that, the, you're probably talking about walking two miles to, to span that distance. And one of the things that we should keep in mind is that this is essentially a senior residence. The people who are going to be visiting are going to be these people like nurses aides and home health aides at some point. And for them to say, reach these units and then want to get to 9A to catch the bus means a walk of two miles on roads that, for example, on Worthington doesn't even have a shelter, a shoulder to walk on. That's quite dangerous for the, for these low income workers who are going to be providing services to these residents.
Okay, one thing we need to do is distinguish between what is proposed here and what is currently under construction across the street, which is an assisted living development. This is 55 and up, not assisted living. Some of us are 55 and under and just over 55, some of us are a lot over 55. But this is going to be a regular housing development. They're not allowing kids because they're trying to sell it, it's not going to affect the schools. This is, I think we should think of this as a regular housing development. And, you know, eventually people may age in place. And what Rob said, they, at that point, they may need help, home health aides and things like that. But this is targeted to a different demographic. And I, I think they're just trying to get away with building, you know, townhouses, you know, I don't know who's going to be so strict and say, well, you're 49, so you know, you can move in or, you know. You know, I, I think it's going to be complicated to restrict it to 55. So I think it's just going to be a regular housing development, I think we should treat it as such. Any other comments?
Yeah, I agree because I, I just cannot see how this is going to be a senior residence. It's just not planned according to the general realities of who senior people are. Because you're not going to get a whole lot of people at 55 or, you know, you're going to get a lot of people older than 55 as well. And this, it just doesn't, it just doesn't look like a senior residence. I think it's the camel's nose or whatever, you know, just a little piece.
Yeah, they had said in the DEIS that the Housing Association would be the first in charge of making sure that the age restrictions were put in place. And then after that, if problems were found, it would actually be against any certificates of occupancy. But the first kind of step would be for the HOA to realize, you know, some, or to, to block people that were under 55 from owning on the property.
Michael, was there any, any analysis done on the cost benefits long term of the infrastructure? And, you know, how, whether this all pencils out for the, for the, you know, the town and, and of course the county?
They had, and they were trying to make the case that this was providing kind of the most tax benefit to the town based on the fact that they were saying that since it was for 55 years and older, they won't be using as many services. And especially banking on the fact that there weren't school age children allowed. So yeah, they were, they were again making the case that it was kind of the most tax advantageous to the town, this development as opposed to the six other ones that they proposed. Or definitely included that this.
I think, I think one of our comments was that their current zoning plan allows for 119 units. Now, I think we all prefer a cluster to that kind of a subdivision. But I, you know, I think we should recommend that there be no more, a cluster with no more than 119 units. That's what's currently permitted on the site. Now they want a zone change so they can, you know, add 50% more units to their development. But I don't see any justification for that.
Yeah, and I would really like to see any kind of a demand study that they saw for this kind of housing, where these people are going to be coming from, who are going to, you know, seniors, generally families of one or two, why they're going to be buying three, three bedroom, three story buildings is kind of beyond me.
And I wasn't around, I, I wasn't around the, the last time, year and a half ago, whatever it was that this was presented, but am I, I'm, I feel like, and I might be wrong, so please correct me, but does the zoning change, is the zoning change what gets them around the affordable restrict, the affordable requirement? In other words, if they didn't have the zoning change and they had to do it according to one of the other plans where they wouldn't have the zoning change, would they then need to have the affordable housing requirement?
From my understanding with the affordable housing requirements, it's because they aren't considering this a multifamily development. It's essentially they're treating it as separate houses. They just happen to be touching. So because it's not a multifamily development, they're saying that they don't need to incorporate any affordable housing.
Well, of course, the town could require it.
Yeah.
As, as part of the approval process. Okay, Michael, why don't you draft up something and send it out to us? Taking into consideration the comments in the past and then the ones from today. And then everyone take a look at it, we have until, what was it, January 20th or something like that, so. You know, we have time to get this out. Any other comments on this application? Okay, thank you, Michael.
You're welcome.
Matters of board action, BPL 30, new homeland acquisition, Point and Ravine Apartments, City of Yonkers.
Leonard is going to do this, but before he starts, I just wanted to make one general comment. I do want to remind the board that your role in reviewing these affordable housing developments is to make recommendations related to the financing, to the use of the county bonds. All of these affordable housing developments are subject to local land use approvals. So what they look like, how tall they are, what their parking requirements are, all of that is subject to the local municipality and we do want to be careful about stepping on the toes of the local municipalities as they make their land use decisions related to what these developments look like. So I know there were, you know, a couple of comments made about this that Leonard's going to go through. So that's why I just want to be careful to remind you what your role is, you know, for your meeting discussion today.
Norma, thank you for that, because I sent some comments, I'm just curious, can you give me like one or two examples of the kinds of questions that you think we should be asking?
Wait, wait, one second, won't this come before the county planning board as a referral?
It's already got its land use approvals, Richard.
Won't it, shouldn't it have come before the county planning board for its approval?
It depends, it depends if, if.
Well, does it meet the criteria to come before the county planning board for approval?
Michael or Lucas, did you, did you guys review this Point and Ravine development?
I don't remember this one, but.
I don't remember it either. So in effect, they're violating the law by not having made a, assuming it's a required referral.
Well, we, we gotta be careful about statements like that. We don't know because Lucas might have, might have reviewed it.
Okay, Lucas, will you please check and see if it has been reviewed?
It, it has not been reviewed, I don't, I don't have any record of it, I don't believe.
And based on its location, Lucas, was there a requirement for its review?
I have to double check. Let me, I can do that during Len's presentation and answer it at the end.
I have to double check. Let me, I can do that during Len's presentation and answer it at the end.
Okay, let's, let's take that at the end and now we'll just deal with the finance.
Because, because, Richard, you do bring up a great point. If we, in fact, a referral was required, that would have been our opportunity for the county planning board to comment on the issues related to what it looks like and how tall it is and parking and.
Exactly. All of Rob's comments would be germane as a traditional planning board review.
Exactly. Well, not a traditional planning board review under general municipal law. Yes.
Okay, Len, why don't you go ahead and Lucas will check and see if we in fact have ever commented on this as a planning board as opposed to the finance.
Okay, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So as Norma said, this is the development known as Point and Ravine in the city of Yonkers. It's being developed by Conifer Development. And this is just the location, a general location map. It's just north of the downtown Yonkers. This is the this is, this is the Yonkers train station right here. So that's downtown Yonkers, and the development is just to the north. The Glenwood Station is just up right here, just a little north of the site. So this is more, this is an aerial view of the approximate site location. You could see this is, this is where the mid rise building is. This is Ravine. This is Point, Point Street, and this is Gold. So the development stretches, the main building is here. And then there are some infill buildings along here, and then they are rebuilding an existing park area that's not developed at all behind here. And there are some scattered lots here. Most of these lots in this part of the site are, are the city Yonkers owned. This site and the small lot over here on the corner, opposite the main site are both privately owned sites that Conifer is in contract to purchase. The, the land back in here, this is all part of the waterfront redevelopment. The, this is the old B I O C wire company, the factory building, and most of it's been cleared. And right now it's Excel Development has a proposal in front of the city of Yonkers for approximately 1,400 units on the 20 acres there. And then to the south here, that, that extends all the way down to here. This is the MTA bus garage. And then down here we have Avalon just completing 589 units, and then Rose Associates, just where these buses are, are to the south here. Is, has a proposal, I believe it was approved for 440 units as well. So that's the waterfront development in context, and their train tracks run right through here for Metro North and.
Where is the access to the waterfront development, street access?
Street access right now is here. The closest street access is Babcock Place. So you would, you would have to come down through here and then walk through here. There is a, an old bridge that is, that is fenced off. It was a pedestrian bridge for, it served as the parking lot for the B I O C workers. They used to cross the tracks here on an old bridge. That bridge stands over the tracks, but it doesn't, it basically was cut off. It's, it ends in, in the air, so to speak. And I, I don't know if there's a plan to rebuild that bridge or anything like that with the Excel proposal. I can find out at some point, need be. So the, the development consists, as I mentioned, of scattered sites throughout Point Street and Gold Street on Ravine Avenue. These are the specific addresses. The city owned sites, the, there's a land disposition agreement in, in place between these that was approved by the city council in the city of Yonkers, between the developer and the city. And the developer has site control over the privately owned parcels. The requirements of the LDA, as I previously mentioned, there's the Irving Park, which is right now currently undeveloped parkland. The developer will clear out all the overgrowth brush, et cetera, and create walking paths, seating areas, and also basically set up an area for the future development of the community garden. That, that development of the community gardens will be handled by a nonprofit in the area. The, they also will be required to build out 52 municipal parking spaces on city owned property that mainly serves, that would serve both the park and also additional parking for residents in the area. The 52 spaces would be owned and operated by the Yonkers Parking Authority. Those are completely, those spaces, the 52 spaces are completely separate from the onsite parking that is required. So this shows a site plan of each, where each buildings and the various parking lots are. The, this is the main, the podium building, as it's called, which is the main building with parking in the rear. This Glenwood Terrace is a paper street right now, which would be improved. And then there's additional parking for the mid rise building here and here as well. And these are the, the low rise buildings that's currently vacant lots. And they're parking behind, behind here. And then the 52 municipal spaces, this is currently a paper streets. They don't exist. They would, this would be the municipal, as well as municipal parking on a vacant lot here, which is city owned, and also this city owned site, which has a building on it, which will be demolished. And then the parking lot would be created. So the development itself includes 146 rental apartments, of which 44 would be for seniors aged 55 plus and one employee unit. There will be 179 parking spaces for the residents, either under or underneath the mid rise building or in the rear of all of the buildings. The, the development will include an outdoor rooftop courtyard seating area, two community rooms, one for the seniors, one for the non senior population, a lounge, gym, laundry facilities, and an onsite management maintenance. The development has a varying affordability with 20 units at 40% AMI, 49 units at 50% AMI, 58 units at 60, and 18 at 90% AMI. And this is just the income level you would see in this development from one to four persons, from 40 to 90% AMI.
Why, why are there 90% AMI units?
They most likely, the state HCR wanted to see a mixed income development, as well as probably the city of Yonkers wanted to see mixed income, so they, they probably, both probably asked for some 90% units in there, just to, just to throw a mix, make it more of a mixed income development. So the, the proposed financing right now, they are seeking funds from New York State Housing Finance Agency, which is the first mortgage of approximately 14.6 million dollars. They are seeking almost 21 million of New York State HCR subsidy from various different subsidy pots that the state has. And then the Long Income Housing Tax Credits would net 23.8 million. They are seeking a homestand acquisition from the cap of 5 million. That is about 34,000 per unit. That 5 million would be towards the privately owned sites and would not be used for the city owned sites and not for the municipal parking sites. The Brownfield Tax Credits.
Say that again, the 5 million.
New Homes Land Acquisition money, the 5 million will be only used for the privately owned, what is currently privately owned, that their, that Conifer is in contract to buy, not the city owned sites.
So they don't, Conifer doesn't own them. They're, they're contract vendors on those properties?
They are, they're contract vending on the three lots that are privately owned.
And how much, do we know how much is being paid for those lots?
I believe it's 6.2 million. So there, it's a little more than, than the county's, you know, $5 million per development limit. And we did have an appraisal, which basically affirmed the value of those privately owned sites, city owned sites. So the Brownfield Tax Credits will net equity of about 3.2 million. The city of Yonkers is putting in their own home funds of about 500,000. And then there's accrued interest on the HCR, the state subsidy, about 1.5 million and a deferred development fee of about 2.8 million. The total development cost is about 73 million, or roughly 500,000 per unit. The, this is an aerial view rendering of the development. So the, this is the mid rise building in here. And this is a quarter of Point and Ravine coming down here, and then the low rise buildings are right here and right here. And then the park and the additional parking would be back here. And then this is all the waterfront redevelopment, downtown Yonkers, right for this vicinity. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I know Norma talked about the comments from Mr. Barron. But I can go through them if anybody wants me to, or, or we can, or however, anybody wants to proceed.
Let's wait for Lucas to tell us whether we have jurisdiction.
Oh, we do not. I, what happened was this matter was referred back in 2019 when this, when a zoning amendment was involved. And we responded back then. But then it came back in, on July 14th of this year, and they were not seeking the zoning change anymore. And it was just area variances and site plan. And so I had a back and forth with Lee Elman, the, the planning director in Yonkers over this. And I informed him that it was more than 500 feet away from any jurisdictional trigger that would require a site plan review. It's just out of the range, about 600 feet from the nearest jurisdictional trigger, which is the old Quoknack with a state park.
Lucas, the, the tracks aren't a jurisdictional trigger?
Uh, no, we haven't been using the railroad track. The, the, the way the law is written, it's, it's all about buildings. It's, the tracks are not a building, so. We haven't been historically using the tracks as a, as a state building that would trigger a referral review.
But we use streets.
Right, but there's no state roads within 500 feet of this site.
Can I just ask you a question about the size of the units? I, I didn't catch how many of each size, just for information?
Yeah, there's 92 one bedrooms, 52 bedrooms, and four three bedroom units.
Again, I have an issue with the 90%. Two bedroom 90% unit is going to rent for $2,549 a month. I have no problem with building units like that, but to call them affordable housing, I think is stretching the term. And I have no problem with mixed incomes within a building. But again, to call the, I mean, and, and the three bedroom 90% are going to be renting for 2,943. I don't even know in that neighborhood what a market rate three bedroom unit is. But I can't imagine it's a whole lot around 2,900.
Richard, I, I noticed that also, but overall, the, the project, it seems like, in terms of the affordability, seems like a good project, and there's only 15 units that are 90% out of 146. So it just seemed, was odd that they had the 90% in there. But overall, we've got a nice mix between 40% AMI, 50%, 60%. And that's desirable generally for, and that, and I didn't think, I didn't think that the 15 units being at 90% was a terrible thing, basically. It just, I don't think it makes much impact when you take the total numbers in terms of trying to get a mixed use development or mixed population in. But overall, I think it's a good development. I think the, I'm glad that we clarified why, why we don't get to review the site plan on that. I was looking at it and saying, geez, we should have seen, we should have had a look at this, but there's a reason we didn't get to see it. And it's part of a larger development that the Yonkers has been moving forward with. Positive, I think, if you go back to the 1980s and think of what Yonkers has been doing that time forward, it's pretty, pretty. So, and it's nice to put some affordable units in nearby with a lot of middle, middle income housing development on the waterfront.
I agree with you, Dwight. My question was just a matter of terminology. I'm fine for mixed income buildings. In fact, that's great. It's just to call those units affordable is stretching the point. These people for a couple of years are going to have some magnificent views until all those other buildings get built and block their views. But they, I mean, it's, it's a, they'll be fabulous, fabulous views from that. Any other questions or comments? And I have a motion to approve the recommend, recommend approval of the new homeland acquisition funds.
Could we first hear what the responses are to the, to Ron's objections? Eustace is going to do that.
I mean, Rob, you can make your, you can make the points you are making. It's just unfortunately, we have no jurisdiction to make those points.
Rini, I'd be happy to, to talk to you offline because I don't want to take everybody's time if it's not really going to help anything, so.
Okay, so can we have a motion to recommend approval of the new homeland acquisition funds for this particular development?
This is approved.
Thank you, Dwight. Have a second.
I'll second it in a second.
Thank you. Roll the roll, please.
James Art?
Yes.
Robert Barron?
Yes.
Dwight Douglas?
Yes.
Daniel Finger?
Yes.
Amina Francella? Amina? Go on. Gail Caspin for UG Grecian?
Yes.
Holly Hasbrook?
Yes.
Richard Hyman?
Yes.
Tinko Picky? Kathy O'Keefe?
Yes.
Bernie Tomes? Okay, no Bernie. And Rini Toppak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, does anyone have any other business? I would just like to follow up on what planning commissioner said. I, I mean, I think this board has been very effective. There are no shrinking violets on this board. Everyone has their comments, which I think is great. There's a lot of input. I think that's what the county's role is, even though our comments can be ignored. I think we are fulfilling our role in providing county point of view on all of these developments. And I think I'm particularly pleased that we're limiting our comments to basically county issues. And so again, I would like to thank all the members of the board for their participation and hopefully next year we'll be a little bit better than this one. And maybe we'll be able to meet in person one of these days. So if there's no other business, can we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
I think I heard, I think I heard everyone vote in favor, so stay safe, everybody, and be well.
Happy New Year.
Thank you. Happy New Year to you. Happy.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Holidays.
Bye bye. Thank you.